Good evening and welcome to the regular Rosemount City Council meeting. Today is February 4th, 2020. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
So without any changes, anyone wish to move a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The agenda is adopted. We'll now move on to, or we do not have any presentation, so we'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to make a statement or ask a question of the council may do so at this time. And if there are no comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items any council member wishes to pull?
Okay.
I'll pull E. Any other items? If not, so E and K will be pulled. Anyone wish to move a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda with items 6E and 6K removed for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Weisensel, second. Councilmember Essler, any final comments or questions? I'll make one comment. One, I, two items on this consent agenda that'll be motioned are donations by the Lions Club and Dakota Electric to our Parks and Recreation Commission. They continually support events in our Parks and Rec Department. I'd like to say thank you. So with that, if there are no further questions, please take the roll.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 and that we will now move to 6E. I pulled 6E, which is the appointment of a resolution appointing election judges for 2020 presidential nomination primary election. And on the sheet that's attached here, normally I'd read it, but when I counted them, it was approximately 90 names.
Yeah.
And I understand we have more than that. So we, the primary is open in Minnesota. You can vote at City Hall during the day, five days a week currently. It's been open about three weeks. But on behalf of the city council, I want to say thank you for almost 100 people already volunteering, including students from the high school. If I'm not mistaken, their requirement's 18 and older?
16.
16 and older. So we, this is just an example of the strong support of volunteers in our community to have approximately 100 people here. And we also just approved our Environmental Sustainability Commission, which is another eight, seven people. So that's about 110 people that are involved here just on these two actions. So with that, again, thank you to all the election judges. I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance established, whoops, excuse me. I gotta get to the right one. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution appointing election judges in the 2020 presidential nomination primary election. We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries and 6Es concluded. We'll now move to 6K and I'll turn this over. Councilmember Block, which is 145th Street Speed Limit Reduction.
So I brought this up first as an education that the speed limit is going to be changing on 145th Street West. For those of us that have lived here for a number of years, it's 30 miles per hour to the, when you're, what is it? East, west, west? So kind of where Super America Tops is, that's where the speed limit changes. That will be 30 miles per hour all the way across. That was brought to us by some residents. That speed limit had been set before there were houses in there. There's a school at the end of that as well. And the state statute changed allowing cities to have some control over the speed limit modifications within cities, which was not allowed before. We used to have MinDOT. And so for those citizens and for the safety, we're changing 145th to be 30 miles per hour all the way across. Do we have a timeline on that?
It'll happen very quickly.
Okay.
Yep. Just a matter of changing signs and then informing the police department of the new regulation and it'll be in place.
Perfect, and I appreciate, I know this took a lot of the city staff's time, Mr. Erickson, chief. So I appreciate that and taking it in consideration, safety within our community as we grow and we get more and more traffic going on that thoroughfare. And with that, I'll make a motion approving a resolution to reduce the speed limit on 145th Street West.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Block, second. Councilmember Essler, any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Block?
Aye.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 and that concludes all items on the consent agenda. So we'll now move on to public hearings. We have one scheduled before us this evening. So at this time, we'll begin the Ron Clark Construction for the vacation of the easement along the rear of Rosemount Plaza Shopping Center. And with that, I'll turn this over to our city planner, Mr. Nemchek.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is related to an item in the new business section of the agenda, specifically the request for a final plat approval that is related to the redevelopment of the Rosemount Plaza Shopping Center. So to provide some context and an aerial of the site, the area in question where the vacation is being proposed or where the easement exists is a 20-foot area between the property line and the rear of the Rosemount Shopping Center building. The easement area is identified on a exhibit provided by the applicant as shown here in orange. It does, it did at one time extend to the south on the area behind the Shenanigans parcel that was vacated at one point. So the remaining 20-foot easement behind the building remains. In order to plat and dedicate easements with the redevelopment, the vacation request needs to be approved by council. The plat, the final plat that is coming before the council later on the agenda does include standard perimeter easements that are consistent with other plats within the city. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up council members. If you have any questions regarding the vacation of the easement of staff. If not, this is a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the podium for anyone wishing to speak on this topic regarding vacating the easement. So anyone wishing to make comments, state your name, address, and whatever your question is, welcome.
Hi, I'm Peggy Spatafor. I live at 14580 Cameo. So I'm directly behind. So this easement is directly behind my house. When you say you're vacating the easement, what, can you explain that to me? What that means?
Okay.
So are, do you want me to respond or are we collecting?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So generally, it's assumed that there was a, an easement placed behind the building as an access or an alleyway. So that, the vacation request is to remove that easement and in its place, when, if the plat is approved and when it's recorded with the county, another drainage and utility easement that's consistent with what the city requires for plats will be dedicated over that area.
So what's the difference in size for the easement?
So the existing easement, it's a 20-foot easement and then the new one will be a 10-foot easement along the rear of the property line. And that's a drainage and utility easement to allow.
Okay, so that doesn't mean that the building will be 10 feet farther back?
No, no.
Okay.
The building as proposed will be 20 feet from the property line.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question regarding this item? If not, this is a public hearing regarding the vacating, vacating the easement. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing's closed. I'll now move it back, council members, for any final comments or questions regarding this item. And if there are no further questions, anyone wish to move a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of the easement along the rear west side of the Rosemount Plaza Shopping Center.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Fresky, second. Councilmember Block, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Droste?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 and that concludes the public hearing that we have scheduled this evening. So we'll now move on to unfinished business. We have one item to report back from a closed session at our last council meeting. And this is to report on the annual evaluation of our city administrator. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, Minnesota state statute requires that the city council report out on how the closed session to conduct my annual performance evaluation went. City council met on January 21st. After that meeting adjourned to a closed session to perform my performance evaluation. Prior to that night, they had submitted five evaluations of my performance in seven different areas to the Assistant City Administrator, who compiled average results in those areas. And you see those shown in your memo here today. So seven items were discussed through the course of my evaluation. The items were ranked on a scale of one to five. All the, all the items came back with averages of meeting or exceeding expectations. And I would just say that I think the council and I had a really good conversation about areas for growth, areas where the city is succeeding and achieving, areas where we can continue to perform better and continue to grow as an organization and for me personally. So had a really positive conversation, appreciate the feedback that we received. And with that, be happy to stand for any questions the council may have. But what was required tonight is that you receive this report of the closed session and so no further action would be required.
Thank you. I'll open up council members. Any question or comments, statements, questions? Only thing, I'll just say, recapping, it's been enjoyable working with you and we have a lot of things going on within the city. We've also, with the growth in the city, have added several employees. In fact, department heads, last year, we hired a new police chief. I think that's the only department head. And I'd say decisions and working with you has been very rewarding and look forward to setting new goals as a council and continued growth this year.
Thank you.
And if there are no further comments, anyone wish to move a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to, uh,
Point of order.
Point of order to discuss the results. There is no.
Yeah, I was just receive the report, so. Excuse me.
You're okay, appreciate that.
It was in action, recommended action. So it was reporting to the public and I was in error there.
No problem.
So that concludes unfinished business. We'll now move on to new business and we have two items. First item before us is a request by Ron Clark Construction for a planned unit master development and final, final site and building plan preliminary plat and final plat approval to construct 124-unit apartment building on the Rosemount Plaza and Shenanigans site. I'll just mention this, there was a public hearing held on this item on January 14th at the planning commission. And with that, I'll turn this over to our city planner, Mr. Nemchek.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the site is the redevelopment proposal by Ron Clark Construction to redevelop a number of parcels over 2.7 acres that contain the Shenanigans site to the south and the Rosemount Plaza Shopping Center on the northern portion of the overall redevelopment site. That includes, includes the shopping center itself as well as the associated retail building containing Metacar and Chill Salon. The general layout of the site shows the building in the southwest corner of the redevelopment area with the retail component that will be developed in the future following the expiration of the leases with the tenants in the secondary building on that site. The developer is proposing to include 124 units within the apartment building. The site will be accessed in three areas. There will be a two-way access along the southern portion of the surface parking lot, a one-way entrance just north of the future retail site, as well as an access onto 145th Street to the north of the parcel. The main benefit of that being that the underground parking garage is located on the north side of the building, which would allow residents to access 145th Street and then jump onto Highway 3 from a signalized intersection. The proposed redevelopment also includes a number of pedestrian facilities that are proposed for the development. Namely, it's a trail along the sides and rear of the site. One of the conditions of approval is that a public access easement be placed over those portions of the site to allow public use of those trails. Additionally, there's some, some improved landscaping along the sidewalk on Highway 3 to provide a better pedestrian experience overall. The site plan also includes the underground parking, which is required by the zoning ordinance, of one stall per unit within an underground or enclosed structure. In addition, the plan shows 75 surface parking stalls to accommodate or to serve the park, the apartment building, residents and guests, as well as the future commercial development area. To provide a little bit of context and offer a little bit of a comparison, if we take the unit mix of the Morrison Building, 27% are proposed to be studios. 42% are going to be one-bedroom and one-bedroom plus den. 29% will be two-bedroom. And then there will be three three-bedroom units or 2% of the site. So if we take into account 127 spaces underground, 75 spaces on the surface lot for a total of 202, but subtract 23 spaces, which would generally be used by the commercial area, that gives us a total of 179 spaces that would be allocated for the apartment building. And using the unit mix, that results in a ratio of 1.44 spaces per unit and then 1.08 spaces per bed. A similar development in the downtown Waterford Commons offers a slightly different unit mix. There's 47% one-bedroom and a greater percentage of the units are two- and three-bedroom, 39.8 and 13%, respectively. That development provides 124 spaces underground. There's an additional 28 spaces and 42 spaces on two surface lots. There is a small 12-space service lot on the south side of that that will be intended to serve any future redevelopment of those three single-family commercial homes on the site. But taking into account the 194 spaces that are currently provided on there and subtracting out the 65 spaces that would normally go for an office retail use, remember that there isn't a minimum parking requirement for commercial or other uses within the downtown other than the underground parking for apartments. That does leave 129 spaces of parking available for those apartments. That results in a ratio of 1.19 spaces per unit and 0.72 spaces per bed, which is lower due to the different units mix. So the development being proposed by Ron Clark Construction does offer more stalls per unit as well as more stalls per bedroom. Another item that came up at the planning commission's public hearing and at the neighborhood meeting was the generate, the traffic that would be generated by the proposed development. The developer contracted with WENK to provide a traffic analysis to give an idea and an understanding of what the traffic impacts would be and what could be expected to be generated on the site. So taking into account a 124-unit apartment building as well as a 4,500-square-foot retail structure, it could be expected to produce 100 and, or 841 trips daily. If you're looking at the existing site as, as it is today, there's a bar and restaurant as well as 45,000 square feet of commercial. If those, if that currently was seeing its best use and highest generation of traffic, you could expect 2,700 trips generated by the site currently. Now, obviously, it's not being used to its fullest potential in that it's not generating the traffic that, that one would anticipate. But even if only a third of the trips were generated by the current uses, it would still equal, it would be a wash as far as trips generated by the site. I'm going to move on to the exterior building materials and talk about those briefly here. The applicant has provided a number of elevations for the, the four sides of the building. The side closest to or facing Highway 3 offers a mix of exterior building materials that meets the zoning requirement of 75% brick and stone. Those are mainly focused on the kind of projecting parts of the building as well as some stone in the recessed areas. The north, south, and west sides of the building do provide lower than 60%, which is the zoning ordinance requirement, but it is consistent with the other buildings that have currently or recently been developed within the downtown. The north side seeing 45% brick and stone. The south, 50% brick and stone. And then the west side facing the residential neighborhood is 24% brick and stone and that those areas are focused mostly on the parts of the building that are closest to those residential areas. Additionally, on the north, south, and west side, that brick and stone is focused on these portions that are more visible as they project out from the building a bit more. To get a better understanding for what the building will feel like when it's built in a 3D rendering, this side featuring the pool is facing the residential area to the west. It's a combination of lap siding and brick on these areas. This being the front side facing Highway 3. And then this is the north side. You can see the entrance to the underground parking below. And then here's another angle of the front side that would be facing Highway 3. And you can see again, the brick really on those more visible areas of the, of the facade. Another thing to note also is the building height. The building height is, according to the zoning ordinance, is measured from the finished grade to the top of the roof truss. In this case, the western elevation of the building is generally at 45 feet, which is the maximum required by the zoning ordinance. The northwest and south, particularly the west, when measured from the finished grade is at, where the finished grade is the lowest, the building is 48 feet tall to the top of the roof truss. Overall, if you're taking into account the average grade to the top of the building as measured by the code, the average building height is 46.5 feet or 1.5 feet above what would generally be allowed. That being said, part of the reason that the applicant has, has designed the building the way it has is to maintain a consistent grade between the western side of the building and the residential areas west of the site, those homes there. Currently, they, there's a lot of drainage that comes off of the roof and moves that way. And in order to meet the building height requirement, it would require them to raise the grade over there, which would exacerbate that issue rather than mitigating it as it, as it is proposed by collecting the rainwater on the roof and moving it to the storm system. So that being said, I think that's about all I have as far as the major issues that came up. I do want to offer a little bit of context too for the building height to give you an idea of what it would actually be in comparison to other buildings. And this is measured from the, the grade at Highway 3. So this would be the proposed Morrison Building. Wexford Common, or I'm sorry, Waterford Commons is shown here. And interestingly, the Rosemount Floral, which is only a two-story building, is almost 30 feet tall itself. And I think if we looked at some of the single-family homes in the rest of the community, those are pushing 40 feet, especially if you're looking at them from their rear grade. So with that, there are a number of actions that are required of council for approval tonight. A couple resolutions that would approve the preliminary and final plats, a resolution that would approve the planned unit development, master development plan, and ordinance to rezone it from downtown to downtown PUD. And then lastly, two motions to approve the planned unit development, master development plan agreement and the subdivision development agreement for the Morrison. So that's all I have. I can answer some questions?
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up council members. Any questions you have of staff regarding this project?
So I do have a question on the resolution. We're ready to talk about that. So on item number 17, which is a condition, my understanding is there's an existing issue with the property owner to the south regarding a curb, curb cut access. But there's also a second issue that is not reflected on this resolution and that in regards to the property boundary between the two on the north side of the hardware store. So I, I would ask that the resolution addresses not only the curb cut, but it also addresses the north boundary line resolution. And then I believe, I don't know what was in the, I believe what was in the packet was, it was, we were going to hold up the certificate of occupancy, but we have, we previously talked about moving that up to actually requiring it for the building permit. So with those, I just want to make sure those two revisions would be part of the resolution that we would, if we decide to move forward tonight, that it reflects those two changes.
So there would be a new statement regarding?
Amendment to number 17. So instead of certificate of occupancy, it'll be building permit.
Yes, and it also relates to work with the property owner to the south to address the curb cut access and the drive aisle width prior to issuance of a building permit.
Okay. And, and I guess, I guess a question for Mary is, is that language strong enough that it does require that resolution prior to us granting the building permit?
Um, yeah, I think so. I mean, if we amend it to require them to work that out, I mean, if you are going to want their building permit, right? So I think we can draft the condition to address that issue.
Okay.
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
For now.
I have a question on the traffic study. So that traffic study was done by an independent partner from the developer? Is that my understanding?
Correct, it was done by WENK, which is a consultant that does that kind of work. And then I should mention too that the estimates that you, they used were industry standards, the international.
ITE.
ITE, yeah, International Institute of Traffic Engineers, sorry. So they were, they're industry standard estimates for the types of uses that exist and are proposed.
So the estimate of having a reduction of traffic by two-thirds versus full, retail at full capacity?
Okay. When is the last time we did a traffic study on that Highway Three corridor?
The city engineer's here, and he's nodding. Highway Three is a state highway, so they do traffic counts, is it every three years?
So the, Mendat would typically do traffic counts every four years there. We do have access to those. I did not look those up. I can look those up and pass in information back to council.
Okay.
So, and that would be based on existing conditions.
Okay. But what we're saying now for this project, the estimate is a reduction because we're moving a residential versus retail.
Council member, I think what the, what we're saying is that if this was a fully-filled commercial, which could have happened at any time because we don't control that, a commercial of this size compared to the proposal would have generated three times as much traffic as this proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is, just to add on is that's, that's pretty typical in traffic studies. I mean, we don't spend a lot of time trying to estimate a vacancy or saying, gee, these, you know, these retailers aren't performing right or the, you know, the residential have a lot of vacancies. It's generally what, you know, using the ITE, what they're experiencing with those kinds of uses. And that's what you're really comparing because you're saying, gee, a bunch of commercial would generate more traffic than the, the project.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
Can you bring up the slide that shows the height of the building? I just want to kind of walk through something.
The one that compares it to other building or the actual elevation?
The elevation. So our ordinance is at forty-five feet.
Correct.
And my understanding is that the highest portion is at forty-eight feet.
Yeah.
Can you point that out on the illustration?
So it's going to be somewhere along the rear where the, where the grade is the lowest along there. I couldn't tell you the exact point where the, where the grade is the lowest along there. In fact, if I'm just eyeballing it, could even be that some part to the south because that's the way the grade slopes down there.
I guess I'm talking about the top of the building. Can you point out the tops of the building?
Yeah, sorry. My apologies. So the, the highest point is from the, from I guess the finished roof line to the architectural appendage above the entryway on the eastern side of the building. The, the parapet structure there is the tallest.
So it's just at the peaks that it goes above the ordinance? Is that correct?
So the, the ordinance measures the building height from the finished grade to the top of the roof truss. So those architectural appendages will be a little bit higher than what we would measure when we're calculating building height. So it's, it's, there will be a couple of these areas that do exceed that. But again, the highest point that would exceed that is above the entrance and on the eastern side of the building facing Highway Three.
And the only way to resolve this issue on this current piece of property would impact the neighbors on the backside?
Really, the applicant would be looking at raising the grade to, to have less of the underground parking area daylighted or exposed, so it would meet that requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to, just to clarify, so if, if people raise an issue, if there's an issue raised about it being at forty-eight versus the forty-five, knowing the developer needs the four, essentially needs the four stories to make this pencil out, they have an option where they could raise the grade and it would, it would not, it would not perform well next to, next to the adjacent properties to the west.
Correct. I think the, the plans shown are the best plan as far as in relation to the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And then back to the traffic. So it's the, the two-page letter that we got from WENK, and WENK and I, and I respect, I respect it, but I, I think the variables that are used probably aren't exactly apples to apples.
Right.
I think we all understand that. So, but I think the general principle is that retail will drive a lot more traffic than residential.
Certainly.
That, that's a principle in, in real estate, correct?
And particularly the automobile-oriented business of the repair shop, even more so than, than other retail uses.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I do have comments.
Go ahead.
So I, I do have comments, and, and the reason, this is going to be a little lengthy. I'm going to warn you. Partly because we received a number of emails. All the city council received about forty-seven emails over the last two days. We've heard from a great number of you. We've reached out, all of us individually. It's really great to see the engagement. First of all, I, I, I really appreciate the fact that the, the community's engaged. What it did for me personally is just reinforced why I ran for city council. The vision for what the residents have for downtown very much aligns for what I was excited about and what I heard from residents when I was running a year ago. So it just reinforced, you know, really why, why I ran, and I'm really excited to hear that, that, that residents still have the same belief of what we want to see downtown. We want to retain the small-town community, sometimes described, described as quaint, a vibrant downtown. We want more local businesses in our downtown that support that vision. And the other, the second thing that we've heard pretty consistently is we're pretty happy to see the existing mall won't be there. So these two points, I thought was pretty encouraging that consistent regardless of whether residents support or oppose this project. I grew up in a town of fifteen-hundred in North Dakota. My parents were born and raised there. I know a small town. I, I cherish the small-town feel just as much as anybody in Rosemount. I moved here from Apple Valley. I didn't know what Rosemount was going to bring. I was really excited about the small-town feel, the community, the quaint, the vibrant, or the, maybe not yet, the vibrant downtown. But I, but I too, like everybody else, has communicated us, we want to keep that small-town feel. And despite what some people are saying out on social media, we're not trying to ruin downtown. We're actually trying to, trying to enhance it. I want that small-town feel that my kids want to move back to, and I ran for council to help improve the likelihood of making that happen. I also ran on economic development. I saw us using, losing businesses far too quickly. Applebee's and Ace Hardware were the most visible, but we also lost other small businesses that have left downtown as they weren't viable. Actions that this council has taken over the past year and the staff should demonstrate our efforts to reverse this trend. We hired a full-time economic development specialist in Eric Van Oss to actively recruit new businesses. His cold-calling efforts, handling his handle on the leads in a very short time of, of having him on staff has been quite impressive, but it's new and it takes time, and there are many, many possibilities in the works currently. I also ran specifically on reinvigorating Rosemount's downtown. Now, this I can relate to the forty-seven emails that I got over the past couple of days. When the concept plan was originally shared at a working session, I reacted exactly the same way as many of the residents responded in those emails. I have the same level of passion and disappointment with many of you that share the concerns that I will identify and, and address below. Staff and council, I believe, will also tell you that I verbally expressed those concerns. And my, and my vision initially was much like Waterford Commons over on the east side of Highway Three with retail on the ground level. But as residents who elected me expected me to do, I needed to educate myself to make sure that we're making the right decision to, to fulfill the vision of what, what our residents want. Now, I ask you indulge me on explaining the work I've undertaken. As we all learned in probably the first or second grade, I'm going to show my work and explain to you why, why I'm voting the way I am on this, on this, on this project. I'm not, I'm not, my goal is not to change anybody's mind on your position, but I'm only to provide the path of my decision, and who knows, maybe I'll, maybe I'll change some minds in the process. So I've spent a great time of, a great deal of time studying this issue, and I, I did because I want to feel confident that my vote is the correct move for what the vision is for what the Rose, Rosemount residents want in our downtown. So in that research, I reviewed the downtown's concept plan created by the downtown task force back in two thousand and four, and once again updated in two thousand and seventeen by many long-term residents. I also spoke with several business owners downtown to gather their concerns. I've spoken with several brokers, many of those names you'd recognize on commercial locations here, which we're trying to help encourage other businesses to come in to get their insight. I also had the opportunity to talk to two mixed-use developers and, and get their perspective on why a combination of the residential and retail wouldn't, wouldn't be a better solution for, for our, our, our situation. And I've actively engaged with several residents beyond the emails that we've gotten. I've reached out to several residents, as I know the rest of the council has as well. So in those emails, in the forty-seven emails we got in the last two days, I think I've captured them all into six items. More, we want more local retail. We don't want it downtown. We have traffic concerns. We want three versus four stories. We're concerned, we have concerns about parking. And not as many, but people feel like nobody wants this, and there's a perception out there that nobody really wants this. So first of all, in terms of more legal, more local retail, first of all, the city doesn't build buildings and run businesses. We don't spend your tax dollars doing that. These are private businesses who decide where they want to go. We can and will, however, create the environment that encourages these businesses to want to come to Rosemount and invest in our community versus somewhere else. This planned project does include a four-to-five-thousand-square-foot retail outbuilding as part of phase two, and the only reason it's not part of the first phase is due to longer-term leases on the two existing businesses. Residents want a wine bar, brewery, specialty retail, small restaurant. That kind of dining works well separate from a residential with ventilation and noise issues to those residents. So I, I believe that the four-to-five-thousand-square-foot separately provides, provides a good resource for that. Second, second objection is they don't want it downtown. Put it somewhere else. First of all, one of the visions that everybody seems to have is we want this vibrant downtown, quaint downtown, and able to do that and encourage our businesses to be viable, we need more residents. We need more residents downtown, and we need them to be able to have walkability, reducing parking and traffic issues, which again are, are a number three and four of the, of the objections. In my conversations with brokers, they see this as the ideal location to support and attract businesses. Currently, my understanding is we've got three current vacancies in Waterford Commons. We've lost businesses over the past few years in downtown, and I also understand that the resident, or the retail pricing over at Waterford's is eighteen-foot versus a market rate of twenty-five. So what that means is we're currently, we're currently charging lower, the, the, those tenants are being charged lower rates to help keep them around. Our goal is to bring more people to the community, which will help make more viable businesses. Unanimously brokers, I, I talked to four different brokers. Again, many of them you'd recognize on the, on the names out, on the signs out here. They unanimously believe this project will help move, move Rosemount forward by getting more people downtown to supporting the existing businesses and attract new ones. Live, work, and play. When businesses look to come to a community, they want to check the box as much as possible on live, work, and play. When people live downtown, people go visit them. On the weekends, and residents and visitors alike support the local business in the community. Once they get here, there's no traffic as, as, as they're, as they're walking. Traffic, traffic concerns, we've talked a little bit about that. I just want to point out, the nice thing about this development is you do have an opportunity to exit to the north and then go out onto one-forty-fifth to get out on, out on the Highway Three. So it doesn't encourage, it'll actually encourage going that route to get onto Highway Three. As I mentioned before, I, the, the study that was included in the, in the packet, I, I find suspect, but the industry norm is that residential will drive less traffic than, than retail. Three versus four stories, we talked about it. It has to pencil out for any developer. The alternative is that they walk away or do something that doesn't exactly fit in with the neighbors to the west. Parking, parking is included with, with the lease, unlike Waterford Commons, which you pay extra for. So residents aren't going to be forced to have to pay extra to park, park underground. More broadly, however, I, I need to go on record, I'm still not satisfied, and I'm quite concerned about parking downtown as we redevelop it. And I do encourage staff, I brought this up, and I'll continue to, to encourage staff to look more broadly at what do we got to do to resolve and address some of the parking as we redevelop down, downtown. But this, this, that's not a reason to hold up this project. And finally, nobody wants this. First of all, there is substantial support from local businesses, many residents, some perhaps not as vocal. This received unanimous support from the Planning Commission, the broker community, and many, many downtown businesses, including those affected by the project. They recognize that we need more people downtown to keep their businesses more vi, more viable and to ultimately attract more businesses. So back to the goal, back to the vision, we consistently here, retain that small-town, quaint, vibrant feel of Rosemount. We hear you, and we're here to do that. The good news, there, there is a consistent vision for downtown. We may not take the same path, but it's our job, we feel like it's our responsibility to study the issues and, and do what we feel brings the highest probability of delivering the vision to what, whatever, what all the residents seem to want, the vast majority of the residents want. Please recognize, if we turn this development down and say no, we could possibly go several more years to attract this kind of development to help upgrade our unique downtown and the opportunities that we'll create. This property's been on the market for two years. We've had two other interested parties. Both of them were residential. I'm not interested in waiting longer, and I don't think our residents are either. As one broker put it when I spoke to him, "We need a lightning rod to show existing and future businesses that we are committed to providing additional patrons to these downtown businesses." Furthermore, unsolicited feedback from three of the four brokers, Ron Clark is a very quality developer and contractor, and we've seen them work diligently with the neighbors and, and with the city and, and with the community, and we believe they'll be a good partner. Some may believe that an easy answer is to respond to local, to vocal opposition with a no vote. I do believe that's the wrong vote to move Rosemount forward based on both the experts and residents' feedback about the vision. Therefore, I will be voting yes on this project to follow through my campaign promise to move Rosemount forward. Finally, aside from this specific project, my broader concern is the trust in the competence of this council and city staff. In my first year, I've seen incredible things from this staff and council. We're all aligned on what we're trying to accomplish and, and achieve what the residents want from us, and we're going to work hard every day to improve that. We will continue to be transparent and look to further engage the community. And that's the intent, the intent of this is that the results generated will quickly demonstrate our efforts. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll make mine quick. Comparatively. I, since January eighth, when we had the town hall meeting and there was a lot of passion in the room, I made it a focus to meet with people. And as of this afternoon, I've talked to seventy-five different residents, some residents all over the city, some in downtown, and many business owners. And while my engagements aren't scientific, scientific proof, I can tell you that more than seventy percent of those individuals are very supportive of the project. What I found is there's several misconceptions about it. It's not Section Eight housing. It's not senior housing. The city isn't ripping these businesses away. These are property owners who are willingly selling their property to the developer. It's something we're trying to do to make Rosemount better. Are there valid concerns? Traffic is a concern. I appreciate the independent study that was done. I think we need to do more. I think we need to have a study of Highway Three and how we can continue to move our traffic to different avenues, so I think we do have some work there. But I think the one thing I found in engaging with our residents is they want action. They want downtown to be revitalized. And whether this is a perfect project or not, that's the, in the eye of the beholder. But what I can tell you is the majority are, are in, in favor of it. So therefore, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mine will be short as well. I have talked to a number of residents, and the developer will tell you as well, along with Paul, at the very beginning, I was vehemently opposed because it didn't have any retail, and that's what I had run on. However, what I am learning, having an eighteen-year-old son and a twenty-two-year-old daughter, is we are losing our young community members because there's no place for them to live here, and so they're leaving, and it's really hard to get them back. And this will give an opportunity for us to keep those residents and to attract younger residents. And if we keep those young residents and we attract those residents, those younger residents, we will get more retail. And it's kind of the tail wagging the dog type of thing. And it's in the best interest of the community for this to go in because, as Paul and Heidi said, if we let this development go, we don't know how long we're going to go before we get someone else coming in, and that mall that is there is currently, even before this happened, not even half-occupied or only had part-time commercial. And so it wasn't generating what we want as... And so it wasn't generating what we want as an energetic downtown, whether it's during the week or on the weekends. We want to see that activity, and I think also from just people talking about the, the feel and the look of downtown, what this is going to look like with people coming and going, and the, even the improvement on the sidewalk is going to be much better than what we have today.
My turn.
Your turn.
Comments?
Yeah, so the comments that I'd bring forth, I would echo all of those that have previously been, uh, stated, I'd like to give a little context. Also, um, it was mentioned that the downtown redevelopment plan dates back to two thousand and four. That in two thousand and sixteen, uh, two thousand and seventeen, we went through a, a community-wide effort to engage people. Uh, some people took advantage of that, uh, with the, uh, numerous, uh, comments that we received. Apparently, a lot of people didn't take that opportunity. And so I, while I appreciate all the, uh, social media, the emails, we listen to those things, uh, I would actively ask people to become more engaged and more involved when there, when these opportunities come forward. I would indicate that on one opportunity that was back in, I think, twenty-ten, uh, when the Rosemount, uh, which was senior living that was brought downtown, was first brought forward, it took us several years to get that even to the point of where we are today. Uh, we went through several developers, uh, several different deals. And, uh, at that time, there was some angst about how that project was going to fit in. And I think if you ask most people today, uh, that was a good job. I, I would offer one other, uh, case, uh, when people, a lot of, a lot of times, don't like change or are afraid of change. And, uh, at one time, uh, both, I think, the mayor and myself were on the planning commission. And, uh, if you can believe it or not, people did not want to see a Cub Foods come to this town. Uh, some people might be a little surprised by that, but that was actually, uh, something that came before the planning commission. Fortunately, I think we've, uh, we're okay with having a Cub here. So the, uh, you know, with all of this, I just really ask people to understand where we are going with this stuff. Please get involved, uh, when you have those opportunities, reach out to the council, which many of you have. And, uh, we'll be taking, uh, action on this, uh, shortly, I believe.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. When we moved here thirty years ago, I've, uh, on thirty-first year, uh, I've been involved in some way on, uh, planning commission or committees. The city had plans to redevelop downtown even before I moved here, so this is not new. Street beautification project, I remember in the early nineties, was one effort to try to put some vitality into our city. We're a hundred and sixty years old, at one time, we were tremendously vital, that was before Apple Valley started. And then when suburbs built up, these, uh, older downtowns, um, did not survive if investments weren't put into them. And, uh, I would say the first thing, there's been many plans, in fact, at the planning commission, one of the, uh, people, uh, that spoke there said she had been involved on six or seven different studies, and this was in line with what was discussed. But one thing I'd say, I always noticed from those plans, um, that we needed to ca- keep the downtown a sense of place and commerce. Uh, it would be predominantly non-auto-related, walkable, a place, uh, where people, housing would be one of the key elements to keep it vital. Even today, our downtown, we have three gas stations, three mechanic shops, a transmission, and a tractor supply. Still in our downtown, it's an auto-oriented downtown. And we'll, uh, with this development and retail, it will eliminate one auto, uh, related, but it's still very auto-related, and with highway three, it is a busy road through our city. Um, someday, we will have another north-south, um, on Akron Avenue that will give us another road north and south between three and fifty-two. But I'd just say, over the time, the consistency of all those plans, and even the plans we just got our, uh, received approval on our twenty-fourty concept plan, every ten years, there's an element in there on the downtown, how to revitalize and put that vitality in here so that businesses can better, uh, serve our residents. I, just like our residents, whether it's restaurants and commercial, yes, um, would do anything, uh, to have someone in here. But I think it's clear, this was on the market for over two years, and you do not see expanded commercial places, uh, very seldom in small communities, because the markets changed dramatically. Even on office, uh, components, we have over eleven thousand vacant square feet on downtown, not counting the mall, today. And like Paul mentioned, it was eighteen dollars a square foot, uh, that's still available for, uh, businesses. But again, it's hard, um, with technology changes and commercial changing. You don't, um, see what we saw twenty years ago, especially with big bucks and retail. So, uh, I am supporting it, um, primarily because it is consistent with, um, what we've had in our plans previously. It also, as mentioned here, the apartment element. We do not have, um, housing in our city, especially with the increased prices, we're at a median price in the two-eighty-plus. If you're a single person or a young couple, if you don't have money to buy a house, we do not have a large, uh, inventory of apartments, we never have. We have one down on Chippendale, and this project would be in addition to help on that element. The other, uh, just couple of comments, uh, it will bring, yes, we will lose commercial space, but once it's finished, it will bring four to five thousand square feet of commercial space. And then the last item on the walkability. Currently, that whole site has one percent green space, when it's finished on this proposal, it's fifteen percent. So a significant change through the development, the paths and landscaping. Uh, I think it'll make soften, in a sense, the downtown by having that green space. So with that, uh, if, uh, no one else has any, uh, final comment, anyone wish to move motion?
Do they all, are we doing them individually, or?
Do them individually and just take one, one each.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for the Morrison with conditions.
Do we need to, um, amend that to say with the amendments?
Yes.
The amended number seventeen, I think, would be the right way to, with the modification of seventeen.
With the modification to amendment seventeen, second.
And that's actually for the, um, motion for number three.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. Scratch that, I'm just gonna start over.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for the Morrison with conditions, second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member, uh, Freski, second council member, Block, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensal?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Drostie?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Second, I'll take the second one. Motion to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance B, City of Rosemont zoning ordinance for the Morrison from DT Downtown to DT Downtown PUD Downtown Plan Unit Development.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weisensal, second council member Essler, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensal?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Drostie?
Aye.
Anyone wish?
Number seventeen, I'll, I'll take that since I missed out the first one. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the planned unit development, master development plan for the Morrison with conditions and the amendment number seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Block, second council member Essler, any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensal?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Drostie?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Oh. Oh, sure, yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the Plan Unit Development, Master Development Plan Agreement for the Morrison, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Essler, second council member Freski, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Weisensal?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Drostie?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Nope, all right, I'll move the motion to approve the subdivision development agreement for the Morrison, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into this agreement.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weisensal, second council member Block, any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Block?
Aye.
Drostie?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensal?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, five-zero, and that concludes all motions and all items under item, uh, nine A. We'll now move on to nine B, which is approval of a resolution adopting, uh, modification to the redevelopment plan for the Rosemount redevelopment project, approving the elimination of parcels from downtown Brockway Tax Increment Financing District and establishing a Kenrose Tax Ro- Tax Increment Finance District, District. And adopting a Tax Increment Financing District Plan, and the approval of the City Interfund Loan Resolution. And with that, I'll turn this over to Ms. Lindquist, Mr. Van Oes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as the council is aware, uh, the costs of redevelopment are usually higher than a Greenfield, uh, development. As such, uh, the city has explored potential, uh, public finance assistance, uh, working with Ellers. Uh, Ms. Kurtz has given presentations on the final TIF plan on the, on, uh, January twenty-first. Uh, and we had a subsequent hearing where we had no comments, uh, issued. Uh, the planning commission on January twenty-eighth had then passed res- passed a resolution affirming the TIF plan conforms to the general plans for downtown. Uh, Ms. Kurtz will give another presentation on the final TIF plan, uh, in next steps.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And I just want to take a couple minutes to again, um, give an overview of the TIF plan as presented, and then talk about the next steps and the actions that the council should consider this evening. Um, as we've been discussing, the development that is being proposed is a hundred and twenty-four units of market-rate rental housing, and between four and five thousand square feet of retail space. Um, just following up, there has been a fair amount of discussion just previously about the, um, common, what we are seeing in the market right now with, um, a lot of housing or multifamily housing development, and with the retail being a smaller component under the current market conditions. But something that if the people come, or the residents are there, we start to see or anticipate seeing greater retail come in the future. Um, the TIF district that is being proposed is a redevelopment district, and there was an independent report completed by LHB. Um, it is attached in the TIF plan that does support the findings required for a redevelopment district, including the coverage requirements, as well as more than fifty percent of the buildings being substandard. Um, as a reminder, with redevelopment, it is an expensive process, um, especially as it compares to Greenfield development. Some of those additional expenses are related to not only acquisition, but demolition, cleanup expenses, and then the potential unknown cleanup and, um, other expenses that may occur as you get into, or as the developer gets farther into that project and starts to redevelop it. Um, with that, because of those additional expenses, we do typically see tools such as tax increment or tax abatement being used to assist and fill a gap so that the project can move forward and be a successful project. Um, with that, again, I will just, um, reiterate some of the comments we have heard this evening, is that in order to create that increment, we do need that density in high-valued projects to in, generate a higher tax base, therefore the increment to fill, um, the gap of those extra costs that are, um, associated with redevelopment versus the Greenfield site. Finally, the term of a redevelopment TIF district is a maximum term of twenty-six years of increment. And again, that is a maximum and will, um, could be shorter after the obligation is paid off, so that will be determined in the future. I'll get into the details with the obligation in just a minute here. Um, I do want to make one final point as it relates to the TIF plan and the redevelopment. And that is that this acquisition and the, um, associated negotiations are being completely done by the developer, so that is not a role that the city, or responsibility that the city or the Port Authority is taking as that acquisition is being, um, completed. We've talked a fair amount about the location of the district again, at the mall site and the Shenanigan site. Um, Mr. Van Oes did outline the process that has been completed. Along with that, I will add that the county and the school district received notice and were asked to comment on the draft TIF plan. Um, we have not received any comments from either entity. Then, the public hearing was referenced, on that notice was published, the planning commission has reviewed the project. At, uh, the previous meeting this evening, the Port Authority did adopt the TIF plan, and the action for the council tonight, uh, or, I apologize, at the last meeting on the twenty-first of January, the public hearing was held by the city council. Jumping forward now to the action items this evening, as I said, the Port Authority did consider and adopt the TIF plan, um, including the removal of a parcel from the downtown Brockway TIF district, so it could be included in the Kenrose TIF district. Um, the development agreement was approved by the Port Authority earlier this evening, along with review of the planning application. So the council's actions tonight, um, look very similar. There is a resolution to consider that would adopt the TIF plan, including the removal of the parcel from the downtown Brockway TIF district to include in the Kenrose TIF district. There is the consideration of an interfund loan resolution, which I will explain in, or expand on in a couple of minutes. And then, um, as we just completed, the review of the planning application. Uh, with the TIF plan, um, approval, there are some findings that the council would be asked to make, um, prior to, or as part of approving that resolution. The first one is that the TIF district is a redevelopment district, and again, we've referenced the independent report to document that qualification. The second one is known as the but-for finding, or that the pro- proposed development would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment. Um, that is a discussion that the Port Authority had at the meeting on January twenty-first, and we, at that point, went through, um, the gap. I'm happy to answer additional questions if, if there are any related to that. The third finding the council needs to make is that the TIF plan conforms to the general plan for the development and redevelopment as the municipality as a whole. As referenced, the plan was reviewed by the planning commission, and they did support that finding. And then the final one is that the TIF district will afford maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for the development or redevelopment of that project area by private enterprise. And again, that is a finding that is outlined in Minnesota statute, that as the council, um, and as part of the approval, you need to be comfortable with. Um, just a quick review of the assistance that would, is being proposed to be provided to the developer from the city and the Port Authority, there are two pieces of financing. The first one is a grant of six hundred thousand dollars, which would be upfront assistance. And it could be reduced if, depending on some future grant opportunities that may become available. But that amount would not be increased, so it is six hundred thousand dollars upfront. The second piece of financing is a pay-as-you-go note in the amount of three-point-four million dollars. Um, that note will be issued to the developer after documentation of qualified expenses that at least meet or exceed that amount. Um, I do want to note that that three-point-four million dollars is anticipated to be paid- that that $3.4 million is anticipated to be paid over the 26 years of increment. However, to the extent that that note is paid prior to the 26 years, the council and the Port Authority have the ability to shorten the term of the TIF district. Or, on the other side of that, while we don't anticipate that the note will not be paid off if something unforeseen happens, and at the end of the 26 years, the note is not paid in full, I want to emphasize, it is not a general obligation of the city, so the city or the Port Authority would not be responsible to pay any shortfall with that. The final part of the consideration for this evening related to the TIF district is the approval of an interfund loan resolution. With that resolution, or the approval of the loan, it does not actually create an obligation at this time. However, approval of that resolution does provide flexibility for the city to repay itself in the event that there are additional expenses that are not covered by the developer, and the city would want to make itself whole. Those could fall under the category of administration or consultant expenses related to the district. They could be city project-related expenses, or if there was an opportunity to use additional increment after the obligation has been paid in the future, this resolution would give the ability to reimburse yourself for that. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll open up. Councilmembers, any questions, comments regarding this item?
Go ahead.
I have one, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm wondering for those viewers who are watching this for the first time, if you could give a brief overview of what is a TIF?
Yes.
Thank you.
Although I will say, I don't have my graphic with me in the presentation, but in very simple terms, tax increment financing, or TIF, is the ability to use that increase in tax base from new development, or in this case, redevelopment, to go back into the project to pay for specific qualified expenses. So in very simple terms, or hopefully, as an example, if, for example, the property today is paying $100 in taxes, that $100 is going to the city, county, and school district, and through the term of the TIF district would continue to go to the taxing entities. After the redevelopment is completed, if the taxes increase and the new tax payment is $1,100, so you have an increase of $1,000, that $1,000 is then available to go back into the project to pay for acquisition expenses, the demolition, or other expenses related to the redevelopment, to help bring it down so the project can move forward and be successful.
Thank you. And so on slide one, when you, when it talked about 50% had to be substandard, can you give a little bit more detail of what that means?
Yes. So for redevelopment district, there are different types of tax increment districts, and what the city is considering this evening is a redevelopment district. And underlying with a redevelopment district is you have to redevelop something. And so it's looking at land that is occupied, whether it be with buildings, streets, sidewalks, some type of man-made improvement, and then related to the 50%, or more than 50% of the buildings need to be qualified as substandard. And that is the step where we had LHB, an independent contractor, come in, review both properties, and with the mall setup, ultimately, there were three buildings identified, the mall being two of them, and the mall property was considered blighted or substandard per tax increment statute. A lot of that deals with building code issues such as HVAC, accessibility, and those types of safety concerns.
Thank you.
So at a high level, we don't have all the numbers here. The mall's worth about 1.4 million currently, the land and buildings.
I can...
It was 395. The cleanup or tear downs about one and a half million, approximately. And then utilities, another million, I think it was, approximately.
Yes. And I will say, just to pause, the budget in the TIF plan does have an inflationary factor to allow for potential for other expenses after the district, or after the obligation is paid. So some of those numbers are a little inflated from what we anticipate for this specific project.
So to the school and county, that tax, tax that they received today, 1.4 million, will stay. That's not going away.
Yes. The revenue they're receiving as the property stands today will continue to go to city, county, and school district.
And when the whole project's finished, it was, I think, about 22 million project, when the whole building's up and the retail, et cetera. So just at a real high level, the numbers that we're dealing with.
Yes. So the, I have numbers in tax capacity, which is gonna take it to a different, different level here. We are anticipating that the increase, so that the city, county, and school district will get the taxes they are receiving today for the term of the TIF district. If the market value comes in at about 22 million, as anticipated, we would anticipate about 200,000 in increment that would be used to go back to the project or the redevelopment for the term of the TIF district. And then after that note is paid in full, that revenue either could possibly be used for other city redevelopment projects if there is time left in the TIF district, or at the end of the TIF district, it goes back and that 200,000 is distributed to the city, county, and school district as any other property tax would be.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So the simple math then is that the 200,000 into the 3.4 million is 17 years. There's interest on that, though, too.
Yes.
So do you have a calculation of, again, if, whatever assumptions you want to make in terms of what the economic, you know, market does over the next 15 to 26 years, is there analysis you've done to show when would we start, when would we, when would the loan be paid off?
We have, this is, again, a lot of assumptions. So if we do not assume any increase in market value, any inflation, or increase in tax rates, it would amortize over that 26 years.
Okay.
We recognize that Ellers, I think, as long, as many of us do, it's a very conservative estimate, and so we do anticipate that there will be an inflationary increase in that market value, although I do not want to tell you what that number will be. So we've been conservative and anticipate that it would take the term.
Fair enough.
Any other?
Thank you.
Questions, comments? That means it's perfectly clear. So if there are no further questions, comments, anyone wish to move a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Is this the right one? Adopting modification to the redevelopment plan for the Rosemount redevelopment project, approving the elimination of parcels from the downtown Brockway Tax Increment Financing District, and establishing the Kenrose Tax Increment Financing District, and adopting a tax increment financing plan therefore. And also a motion to approve a resolution approving the City Interfund Loan Resolution.
We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Essler, second. Councilmember Weisensal, any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Fresky?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Weisensal?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes this item and all items. Under new business, we'll now move on to announcements, and I'll look to our city administrator if you have any updates.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of quick updates tonight for council and largely folks at home to be aware of. First, we are still accepting applications for open spots on city commissions. So this is the Park and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, and Utility Commission. So happy to, we'd like to encourage folks to apply for that between now and Valentine's Day, actually, February 14th. Application's available on the city's website, and so encourage folks to take a look at that. Also, I wanted to let the business community know that our business appreciation luncheon is set for next week, Tuesday. Still accepting RCPs for that. Reach out to community development staff. We'd get you on the list, and would love to provide a lunch and a presentation to all of our great local businesses. So that is next week, Tuesday, at the community center. And then lastly, also to businesses, we have a couple of spots left for our Home Expo, which is on March 14th from 9:00 to 3:00, also over at the RCC. So, and then also, just for folks at home to mark the calendar, March 14th will be an awesome day again. Our third annual Home Expo, about 50 vendors, food trucks, activities for kids, homeowners, et cetera. So, March 14th from 9:00 to 3:00. With that, stand for questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Just upcoming on the calendar, on Thursday this week, the 6th of February, there's an open house from 4:30 to 6:30 PM at the community center. Room 221, it's regarding a roundabout at Diamond Path and Conamara and 140th Street in Apple Valley. The Utility Commission will meet on Monday, February 10th, beginning at 5:30 PM. On Tuesday, the Utility Commission also will be meeting for a work session beginning at 6:30 PM. I'll have mayor's hours or open house on Friday, the 14th of February, from 10:00 to noon. Anyone wishing to ask a question, discuss any items, just come in. No need for an appointment, or if you would like an appointment, may I just call the city hall. On Monday, the 17th of February, offices are closed for Washington's birthday, and the next council work session and meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 18th, with the work session beginning at 5:00 PM, and the council meeting at 7:00 PM. Also, that evening, the Environmental and Sustainability Commission meets at 5:30 PM in the council meeting room. And with that, if no one else has any announcements, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you. And special thank you for those that attended.